Here.
Mrs. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Lavelle.
Here.
And Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Okay, I stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Conklin. Good evening, everyone. A couple of items I would like to share for those of you who walked in this evening. We have, it's our first attempt to provide student artwork here at 4747. Some of the artwork is actually from students who participated in the superintendent's art show and I believe Northview's art show. No, McCord has a piece in there. But this is just the very beginning of bringing student artwork to 4747. We plan to add more to the first floor and also when our community members, new parents, come into the building, as well as our second and third floors. So we just think it's very important and valuable to display our students' artwork. They are so talented, so we're pleased to do that. Also, today, members of our team had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Doug Palmer. Mr. Palmer serves as the transportation director for the Ohio School Boards Association. Actually, Mr. Palmer brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to the table, and he once served as Napoleon's director of transportation. He and Mr. Wolpert pretty much go way back, and we didn't even know that at the time. But a couple of things just to note that we learned in having a conversation with someone who has a statewide perspective on school transportation and some of the challenges that are in front of many, many schools across the state. First of all, we learned that, Mr. Palmer stated that about 90% of Ohio schools are implementing the same plan in which we're attempting to implement, which combines public and what he refers to as CNP, Community Non-Public Schools. And about the remaining 10% of the schools across the state that aren't there are working to that end because there is such a driver shortage across, not only here in Ohio, but across the United States. One point of information that he also shared, for example, talking about a shortage of drivers, and Mr. Wolpert and Mr. Zeroff were in the meeting, as well as Ms. Addington. Columbus City right now is short 400 drivers to transport their students to and from school. 400. I will say that Jim was very pleased that we are not 400-drivers short because that's a tall order to try and modify and adjust to make sure children get to school on time. We also learned something interesting, and again, learned this information, we met with him at 11 o'clock this morning. But we learned that in some areas, some CNPs, again, Community Non-Public Schools, are working in partnership with public schools. And what they're doing with their local education agency is taking on their own transportation needs. They are either working with a privatization or a vendor to provide transportation, or they are getting their state dollars even to secure private transportation, or hiring their own drivers, just like they hire their own teachers, their custodians, anything, their food service folks. But they are working to collect the money that the public school actually secures and funnels that, and we could be a fiscal agent for them. But what he described it as, they get the money allocated for their school, for the students that would attend, and they run their own transportation system or own transportation department, which is something that I went, we were all kind of like, wow, really? And then the more and more I thought about it, being from northeast Ohio, I will tell you, I passed buses that said Walsh Jesuit, that said Hoben, that said St. Mary's. So I do know that some schools do, to his point, some CNPs do provide their own transportation with the state dollars that flow to them. I do think one key piece that he brought up, though, in this idea, is that it is in partnership with the public school. So for example, if we had a CNP take on and direct and oversee their own transportation, we of course wouldn't expect them to have their own bus garage and mechanics. So we would work, if their bus broke down, we would work with them in partnership. Instead of us versus them, let's work together. We would work with them to help maintain their buses, or to train their drivers, or to go through safety inspections together, or training our students on the rules of the bus and the emergency exits. We would do that together in partnership to support the private schools or CNPs. But again, I thought it was a novel concept, something that we had not given consideration. Again, allowing CNPs to have an independent transportation department, solicit their own drivers. It was of his opinion, and again, Jim and Tim, feel free to chime in any time here, but oftentimes, he said some CNPs felt that they are able to secure additional drivers from their own entity, albeit a parish, a church, or a private school that may have a different philosophy about teaching and learning, Montessori if you will. But again, this would be a model that works in partnership, and we would assist in training their folks, and our folks would work together, again, as working in orchestra to benefit all Sylvania students, public and CNPs. So that's one piece I wanted to share that was an interesting learning point for us today. And on a final note, and a very happy note, last week, I was honored to serve as a judge for a students' pizza making competition, and I might mess up, Dorser's Appliance Store.
Dorocher's.
Dorocher's, Dorocher's. I'm still working on it. Dorocher's, first of all, fabulous appliance, by the way. But I will say, it was a wonderful event. We had three students from area schools that participated. The youngest was eight and the oldest was 13. And although I do know the winner, I've been sworn to secrecy, I cannot release the name, but very interesting concepts, very interesting recipes. One of the young men that made a pizza, the young man started cooking when he was three years old and just putting things together. It was, one pizza had ramen noodles, mac and cheese, and ranch dressing. Another one had homemade quote-unquote snake sauce, which was barbecue sauce with steak sauce mixed together. It was his own concoction. And then there was another one that was Nutella with sliced apples, bacon, and fresh basil. Amazing what these kiddos come up with. But it was big fun, and these children are amazing chefs already. We did again select a winner, I think the winner is going to be announced at Pizza Palooza. We will have a media day tomorrow. I don't know if the name will be released, but I can't share it, you know, just letting you know, we're out to secrecy.
We won't ask.
Don't ask, because I can't share that very important information.
But the more she says, it's...
I know, I know. I want you to ask, so I can say, no, 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 I can't. But it was just a great opportunity.
So was this a Pizza Palooza-sponsored event?
Yes, it was. From the Chamber of Commerce sponsored the event, and I was just thrilled to participate and really quite surprised at the level of talent that some young students come up with developing their own homemade recipes. So that's my superintendent's report.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So I'm intrigued by this partnership idea. I'm assuming since you just learned this today, that you haven't had a chance to reach out to like the administration at the non-publics and see if they would even, you know, entertain entering this partnership. And if I understood what you're saying, every dollar we get from the state to transfer these students would go to that?
To that entity, correct. So for example, I know we have a number of parents here in the audience tonight from St. Joe's. St. Joe's would get the money allocated for their students and go to St. Joe's. Christ the King may get money allocated to them, but they don't get to combine, like St. Joe's doesn't get Christ the King money.
They each get their own.
They each get their own pot of money, and they are able to develop their own and house their own transportation department. And with that said, that is correct. I have not, this is the first time I'm sharing this, announcing it in public, because literally at 11 o'clock today, we found out about this idea. And I found it quite novel, like interesting opportunity and possible solution to explore.
So you are going to reach out.
Oh, absolutely. We are leaving no stone unturned in looking at solutions. Again, more than likely not for this coming school year, but moving forward because we know school starts in about a month, not this school year, but it gives us a whole year to plan if that's a direction that they would like to work with us in partnership to happen and bring to fruition.
Okay, well, keep us posted.
Definitely.
That's interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This will be the first opportunity for public participation of items that are on the agenda. Do we have, all right, having none, we are to you, Mr. Dormbusch.
Thank you, Madam President. I have with me tonight, the JV team is also here, Mr. Keaton.
JV team?
JV team.
This is our last presentation, Mr. Koch is here, to the board. Cajun and I, and it just kind of worked out because we actually are able to present you the final, how we ended up the fiscal year, which is obviously very important for treasure-type people because it ultimately determines our financial health. And so what we're going to do here, and just go over just a few slides, just to, because again, this is a big event. What happens in school year is we're right onto the next year because that's what we do, and like Veronica said, in a month, we're bussing kids, we're doing everything, we're right back into it. But we got it, it's important, we always believe, to pause and just kind of reflect on how we did last fiscal year, especially with our transition going on. So I'll invite Mr. Keaton to come up with me here. What I passed out is, we're going to cover that, is the year review. This is our general fund report. And really, the general fund report, which is our main, you know, obviously, it's how we run our school district, came in very close to forecasts with some really, really end-of-year positive items. So that's what you're looking at. And again, you can look at this, and we might have, because we just kind of just finished this and didn't have a lot of time to actually review it. But bottom line is all good news, so you can look at this, and we'll go over it in a little detail right now. The bottom line is, in front of you there, you can see that our revenue is up 3.48% for the year. So again, we fell in line with forecasts. Some things are up, some things are down. As treasurers, we generally like to come a little bit better on revenue if possible, try to come in, you know, close to expenses as well. And anytime things come in a little better on both sides, we're always happy because again, we're just trying to, you know, in a $100 million budget, there's a lot of things that can happen. But bottom line is, we just updated our five-year forecast, and fortunately, Adam was a part of that, and so we worked on this together. But our expenses were down, and again, part of the reason, if you remember, every month, we kind of talked a little bit about state funding. And again, if we have any more questions, because Cajun was on that committee, who developed the new state funding formula, all those expenses that used to be down here called or purchase services for tuition and scholarship deductions and charter school deduction, all those are no longer a deduction. They took it, they netted it out of revenue up above. So that's why you see state funding down, but you also see expenses down. Again, we talked about it, starting, you know, when Adam takes over, that's, we're going to have comparable numbers now, but this one year, every school in the state of Ohio changed. We had a lot of deductions, and then revenue now, it's all netted in revenue. So that made everyone's forecast a little, the net effect wasn't all really that much of a change, but it surely looks like, oh my gosh, purchase services was down 31%. Oh wow, we must have really saved a lot, we didn't really save a lot of money at all. The bottom line is, the state changed how they were charging us for, charter schools are now are direct funded, and we don't, there's not a deduction to us, the money goes right to them. But they also net our, we don't, we no longer get revenue for those students, so that reduced our state funding. So, did I miss anything there?
You're pretty good. You're in that, you're pretty decent. Give me a little credit there.
So again, this is just, we just kind of like to analyze, we came in very close to where we thought we were going to be. These are always things we have to look at. State funding came in just a little higher, some adjustments towards the end. But bottom line is, you know, there isn't a lot of variance between what we projected and what it came in. And again, we were projecting us to have a good year, so it just made it just a little bit better. Same way, expenses came in, salaries nicked up just a little bit the last month, benefits came in a little bit better, but overall, our expenses are in line. So what that allowed us to do, and if, we remember in the fighting, Mr. Feller's not here, but what we talked about in our finance committee, we talked about having a severance fund. Well, we were able to create a severance fund of a half million dollars. So if you look at under transfers, advances out, down below under expenses, we were able to start a severance fund with a half million dollars. This is something that a district, this is just, this is such a wonderful blessing, I think you'll find down the road, and Adam was in full support of this. So now, when we have lots of retirements, right now, it kind of hit our salary and benefit line, and then all of a sudden, the next year, you don't have it. So it looks like your salary or benefit lines are out of whack. A severance fund will, and Adam will determine the proper amount to start funding it every year, so we have a fixed amount of expense going into severance fund. And then if people, a bunch of people retire or don't retire, it doesn't throw off our forecast. It's more of an accounting accrual type situation that state auditor of state definitely recommends. But the problem is, you got to have, you got to like put money into it, that's an expense that first year. Well, we had, we had a really good, we actually had this money, we came in, we're coming in about over a half million dollars better than forecast anyway, so it's like a perfect time to start. So that's why that transfer line is a lot higher than what we thought we were going to do. We were able to start that right now instead of waiting a year. And like I say, I think you'll find that to be a really, really good thing.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight, obviously, the forecast and monthly financials are really looking at only the general fund, but I also wanted to highlight to the board a couple other funds that are, I guess, pretty common, commonly used throughout school districts. So starting off severance funds, Jeff just talked about, we have $500,000 in there now to continue to offset the general fund on any future retirements, and then also have a fixed amount going in each year. Food service fund, $1.8 million. Doing some history on that. This is a pretty remarkable event in a year, and I'll dive in a little deeper here in a sec on food service, but I just wanted to highlight that to the board as well. PI fund, you know, a district this size, I think certainly deserves a PI fund and needs a PI fund, and you know the needs that you have. You know, a million dollars seems like a lot of money, but in all reality, you're talking maybe a roof or two, you know, it just, it doesn't stretch as far certainly, so that's an area anymore, that's just a few school buses with the price increases of a school bus anymore. So, and then the general fund, again, any in the year, with basically just over 100 days cash is what the board ended the year with, $31.7 million there. So.
How many days did you say?
Just over 100, about 108 days roughly, about a third of a year for the budget. So food service. So this is kind of an interesting year with, in a typical year, you have half the schools in Ohio make money in food service, half the schools in Ohio lose money in food service. And Sylvania teetered that line, I think, right in the middle for years. But this year, you know, because of, quite honestly, some changes made at the federal government, every school, big, little, did phenomenal in the food service fund. You know, there's, every kid got a free lunch, and the reimbursements were higher than they were in years past.
And breakfast.
And breakfast. You know, and there's certainly, you know, that's what kind of the card schools were dealt. Certainly, all schools had a much better balance because of it. Just as a, just wanted to do a year-over-year for the board, last year, our total revenue was $1.6 million, this year, $4.45 million, and directly related to the federal reimbursements received by schools.
Every kid is eating.
And every kid is eating. Total expense, $1.65. This year, expenses went up a million bucks. Why did expenses go up a million bucks? Well, a couple of things, probably had more kids taking advantage of meals, raising our food costs. Part of it, the other part, was the aggressive inflation of food costs. Not only, you know, there was a shortage of food throughout the year, we had to get really creative, and we're getting food, I'm sure, and that's, there was a huge increase. So certainly, we can expect to see this expense, having the same amount of kids eat year-over-year, the expense is going to be higher, no doubt, than last year. Just this fiscal year, an $800,000 increase in food costs, and that's certainly...
The biggest thing too is, I know it says surplus a year ago, the reality is, look, we transferred over $600,000 to keep it break even last year.
So you could argue it's a negative half a million bucks.
So we, that $600,000 is right on our general fund, that was an expense, because that's what schools have to do. You have to keep the fund solvent, and that's what we're going to feed our kids, so we...
What did it?
Go ahead. So the point is, when you surplus money, it isn't about trying to make money, it's the fact that you don't have to supplement it with the general fund operating dollars. Taxpayer, no one's having to pay, you know, the lunch prices and everything are in line where we can make a break even or maybe make a little bit of money. What Ray, Mr. Holson, was able to do is, we had a couple of ovens go down, Veronica, we had a lot of issues. Those things now can be paid out of the food service fund, and before, we always had to pay that out of our general fund to buy a $50,000 or $80,000 refrigerator, free whatever. Now, that's the advantage, he orders some new equipment that had been kind of, you know, needing replaced, but...
Original to the building.
Original equipment. So again, a healthy food service is good for the kids, it's good for the general fund, it's all.
And we're left, you know, the bottom line is, I want to point, we wanted to point this out to the board because there's a more than better chance that this program is going to end for next year. I know it's still on the table at the federal government level, certainly, and we're keeping an eye on that. So this may change rapidly in terms of revenue. Expense, I would expect to stay similar, maybe not quite as high, but certainly in revenue, that would change. But the good news is, we have a $1.8 million kind of a jump start to kind of get the train on the track it needs to be, once we figure out what all the changes are. You know, we got to figure out the cards were dealt before we can start making decisions on, okay, what should a lunch price be? And there's even limitations on how quickly we can raise those. So that's certainly something to keep in mind, but just, again, wanted to point that out this evening.
Okay, we only have a couple more slides. So one of the things, again, since this is our last meeting, we, Mrs. Spangler had called myself several months ago and said, hey, our treasurer was looking to leave, would you occasionally be willing to maybe meet with Dr. Motley and come up? And so we did, Dr. Motley and Tim, and we met in the conference room, and we had done this before, and we said, the difference we'd like to tell you is that we want to, if you go with us, we're going to move, we're going to keep moving like a full-time treasurer, we're not going to just be coming in signing checks. We believe that every district deserves full attention and trying to do the best we can for kids all along the way. And kind of hit it off with Dr. Motley and Tim. I mean, it was just, it felt good, and unfortunately, you made the recommendation, and you hired us to do that. And so, and part of that, we just kind of recap some things, because it was one thing to say we were going to do that. We love the fact that through the finance committee, we could eliminate a CAF report that no one was really reading, that's going to save us some really good money. It's a big fancy financial report that I don't think anyone even knew we even had. The time and attendance thing is kind of a big thing right now, but we're going to have that under control. That is, that was the number one priority I heard on the second floor from when we started, is that we kind of had a little, we had two major systems going on, that was to nobody's fault, it just, that's the way they evolved, and could we somehow, and we worked together, we're in the initial stages of that. We were paying for a very expensive company that is really good company, but very expensive to do our forecast that you're looking at here. And we're, with Adam's blessing too, we've eliminated that, and we're going to use our own. The bond rating, you know, what's interesting about the bond rating, we went from to a A-plus rating is our, and I know the gentleman, he's a bond counsel person in Cincinnati, he says, hey, Jeff, I'll call, and I can work, I can work my way through it with you, and I can really get all the information. Again, because I'm old, I can say this now, I'm a little older, I've been through that, and we were able to do it without paying any extra fees, and we did get the upgrade after all. And again, that had nothing to do with me, it had everything to do with how well we were doing financially. So I don't want to, I didn't get the A-plus, it's just that, I did A-plus as far as...
I don't think you get A-plus as a treasurer.
So, but it was a good thing, because what that's going to do for Adam and for the district, in the event we'd ever need to go on the, for a bond, if we'd ever need to do, we would get the lowest interest rate out there, that's what that rating does. Federal funds, and Dr. Motley knows this very well, we came into a situation where we hadn't really received any yet for the year when we started in December, got that turned around, and got all our federal funds, and then talked about the severance fund. That was something that, again, I think our finance committee was very pleased that they were in support of that, and so that we can set, so again, our point here is, we wanted to do what we said in honor, you know, our commitment that we're very fortunate to be here, and we wanted to make sure we followed through on that.
There's one more.
There is one more. So. It's a bad direction. We did not know, we did not know at the time, and again, because, you know, when the process that you all went through, that, you know, when Greg's not here, but he called and said, would you be willing to do this for a year? And...
I think Julie wanted two years.
Of course, of course we would have, but I thought, oh gosh. So fortunately, through different contacts and how it all worked, next thing you know, Adam was available. And it's like, oh my God, if Adam's available, man, you guys need to consider him and Cajun. Cajun used to work with him in his first treasure shop, so...
He used to work for me.
Where's the...
The treasurer works for the superintendent, so you should know.
duly noted, though.
So I think it's just, it's so happy, we're just so excited because we've done some things, we really like what we have here, what you guys have here, and who you have is your team, but then knowing that Adam cares as much as we do about how things are and how schools are run and for kids, so we're excited for him, we're excited that we really couldn't support that decision anymore. So, and we didn't know that was coming.
You know, and lastly, we just wanted to point out, just, it's not all roses, we certainly never want to run into a situation where everything's rosy, and certainly, a lot of these challenges ahead are challenges just to public education and education in general. But here are some things that are very real, that I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to point out. Inflation, obviously, we all read the papers, watch the news, it's real, it really is going to, you know, I would encourage everyone, you know, top to bottom, when we're looking at purchases, to, you know, obviously, we're looking at the best deals, and we're comparing, and we're looking at different vendors and things like that, try to get the lowest cost, because no matter what cost grown up, we all know that. Gasoline cost, I mean, this is a huge thing, nearly doubled this year, FY '22. You know, I just went to Michigan last week, I filled up just above Cabela's there for $4.77, I got back to Sandusky, Ohio, and it was $4.39, I was okay. And that's like kind of where we're at now in the world. So again, kind of hoping this kind of goes back down to traditional levels at $217,000 a year, but again, we don't really know what's going to leave there. Staffing, don't need to really talk about that, we all know, it's a huge thing. Last two things, certainly directly involved with the state, the state budget's going to be a huge thing. I think that there's going to be continuation of the Fair School Funding Plan and a retool and a rework, and is there money to fund it? Certainly now, the states have a record-breaking years, so we hope so, but then again, you never know what's around the corner. And lastly, going along with the state, you know, we're going to continue to have both good and bad things come from Columbus. Some would say bad, some would say good, but certainly, one thing that, you know, prohibited schools was like our ability to challenge values when we think they're out of line, property values across the state, and that was taken away from school boards across Ohio. And again, so that's just one item, it was a way for us, it's easy for us as districts to control our expenses, or easier, but to control our revenues, we really don't have any power there. And this sort of took away, limited that power even more. So, and there'll continue to be challenges from Columbus, I think, but I think, again, great treasure coming up, and we'll keep it fully appraised with all that, so.
Last thing I had was this parting observation, and I think, so it was, I was driving home from graduation, and we were on stage there for the first graduation ceremony, and Julie looked over to me, says, you know, I just love graduation. And really, I watched all of you guys, and Greg did the speech, and how excited you were. And I guess, when you look at a district, and we've had the opportunity to work, when you get that, that at the end of the day, and Veronica, and then I have a superintendent on top of it, that we talk behind closed doors, and I see what her values are, and it's all about, deep down, what is good for our, what can we do for kids? And you guys get what, we got to get them through that, go to crossstage that final day, and you guys get that. And that's why you guys belong on the school board, in my opinion, just because, again, I see, I see that, and I don't always see that sometimes. So that's why, again, I just happened to catch that, and like, that was just so like, made the day for me even more special, because again, you know, it is, it's a very rewarding thing to see, because from superintendent boards on down, at the end of the day, it's to get those kids acrossstage. That's our whole purpose. And so it's really been fun working here, and because of the people that you've hired, and hired, and everyone, and Ray, I mean, they've dawned, and just, everyone on the second floor, it's just been a great experience. So we're just so glad that you gave us that opportunity and passed on a good recommendation, because it's been fun, so.
Feeling is mutual, and I even prove it, look.
Thank you guys so much for everything.
Thank you guys so much for everything.
And I want to say that the board hired you. I know it was my recommendation, but the board was willing to go a unique direction, and I think, I don't want to speak for them, but a little bit, when they say, can you stay for two years, you knew how much it was worth.
We were having some challenges.
We were. We were trying to lock them in.
We were confident we would find the right people. And I'd like to say, you know, I've been here 13 years, and you guys were a breath of fresh air. I mean, we were under a tremendous amount of stress to have a treasurer come in, and you two have been honestly fantastic. Like, the information that you provide to us weekly, you answer our questions, even when they're dumb questions, like, you're there, patient with us, explaining, and it's just, it's seriously, the feedback gotten from the second floor, just the morale of the staff there being so appreciative that they feel appreciated and valued. Honestly, I cannot thank you enough. You've left big shoes, two sets for Adam DeFoe. So we've got a high standard to hold you now, Adam. Just saying. So just really, truly, thank you. Like, you really, it hasn't even been like having an interim.
No, it's been-
You guys have been our treasures.
I forget that you're interim. I mean, it just, it's been seamless, and I really appreciate it, so thank you. Especially because I hate all these numbers.
And then you make them make sense. You make them, you just make them make sense.
Really good.
Yeah, and it's very appreciative.
Okay.
Now, unfortunately, we do have some business here that I kind of skipped over, but I'll, if I could, Madam President, I'd recommend for a consent agenda, items 4.1 through 4.4.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 4.1 through 4.4.
I'll second. Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
And Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back to you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Conklin. I recommend item 5.1, which is the acceptance of gifts from Eric Tiller at United Rennels. He was kind enough to donate a scissor lift for our grounds and maintenance department.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know what a scissor lift is, but wow, what a great gift. I mean, it's so appreciative of that.
So it's a, it's a contraption, and you'll know them when you see it, but it lifts up, it's a power lift, people can stand in it.
So the scissors is what lifts it up.
And the scissors expand, and then it drops back down like scissors. So it kind of expands like an accordion, but this is a very good tool for us.
Very generous gift. Very appreciative. Thank you.
I think people sometimes also like to play with them, but they use them to change lights that are up high, and they're kind of high, they're, have a fear of heights, though. Not the thing for you. Great tool, so thank you.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.2, two overnight field trips for next school year, one for March of 2023 and one for June of 2023. You'll see noted, it is for the Ohio Speech and Debate State Fund, and I recommend approval of these two field trips early, prior to the school year.
How timely.
Quite timely.
I mean, do we even know if we're going to make this state?
We are planning on it to make sure we are checking off the boxes correctly.
I mean, they're not going if they don't make it. I'm sure they're going to, I mean-
Correct. We are confident that our folks will make it, our students will make it. Isn't that right, Mr. Zero?
That's correct. They will make it.
They will make it.
They'll make it. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Jeff?
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.3, which is, I recommend the board approve the Administrator's Handbook for the '22-'23 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Comments, questions?
Mrs. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.4, the Exempt Employee Handbook for the '22-'23 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.5, entering into a contract between the Ronald Group and Silvania Schools effective September of 2022 through March 2024.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any comments or questions?
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.6, an ESC contract for Sue DeBord. She is, works in the maintenance department and serves as a secretary in that position.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments?
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.7, that we enter into an agreement with the Midwest Regional Educational Service Center. This provides support for vision impaired services, for vision impaired students, rather, and this is an annual agreement.
I'll move to- I will second. Any comments or questions?
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.8, Contract for Substance Abuse Intervention Prevention and Services. It is an independent contract with Mr. William, as we know, Bill Gija, for the upcoming school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments?
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item, I recommend approval for item 5.9, to change a Board of Education meeting date from October 10th to October 17th.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any questions, comments?
Did you guys include this day?
No, it was, go ahead.
I have an opportunity-
Oh, that's right.
-to travel with a group of selected superintendents, to travel abroad and global education opportunities. So I'm excited to have been selected and represent Silvania Schools in doing so.
That's very cool.
Genius, General.
I think, yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are with you, Mr. Tiberstein.
Yes, I recommend approval of items 6.1 through 6.5 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 are another batch of licensed new teachers. 6.2 are some licensed resignations. 6.3 are licensed contract recommendations. And 6.4 is licensed extra duty. 6.5 is one licensed unpaid leave of absence for the '22-'23 school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.5.
I'll second. Any comments, questions?
I have a question. We have a replacement for Frank Smith. I'm a little worried about-
We do.
We do, we're good.
We do. So Career Tech, it looks like we have been lucky. I'm working on licenses for people, but it looks like we're going to-
I'm impressed, Jeff. What I expect.
I just didn't pay for it.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I was a little worried about that.
We do have replacements.
Do we have a, do we call the roll?
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm recommending approval of items 7.1 through 7.5 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are classified resignations. 7.2 is a classified personnel change. 7.4 are classified contract recommendations. 7.5, classified additional hours.
I'll move approval of items 7.1 through 7.5 on a consent agenda basis. I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
I'm recommending approval of item 8.1, which are supplemental positions for the '22-'23 school year. I'll do that one separate.
I'll move approval of item 8.1.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
I'm recommending item 8.2 and 8.3 on a consent agenda basis. 8.2 are athletic volunteers for the '22-'23 school year. 8.3 are resignation of supplemental positions for the '22-'23 school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.2 and 8.3.
I will second. Any comments, questions?
Mrs. Lavelette?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
Yes.
Okay, we are now to the Board Committee Reports and Announcements. Ms. Huffman? I don't think so. Jill?
Strategic Plan Committee meeting headed by Jim is moving along on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, setting goals and subgoals and timelines.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing either. All right, so this is our opportunity for public participation of non-agenda items. Move the list. Okay. Just a reminder for those who have asked to speak this evening, everyone gets three minutes, and if you, when you come up, if you go ahead and say your name and your address. And first off, we have Nicole Vanderwheel.
Sorry, you're up here, that's not awkward at all. I guess I, Nicole Vanderwheel, 5558 Woodtrace Court. I spoke at the last board meeting, and I don't have a whole lot of additional things. Dr. Motley, I just, I kind of wanted to address you. I was not expecting, but a little bit expecting a follow-up after our meeting last Monday. I did go through and find an additional driver for sub purposes that's already driven school buses. He's qualified through us with more qualifications, much more experience than I guess what is required after I found out from that meeting. So I guess I was disappointed that I didn't hear because I feel like with the school bus situation, we aren't, I don't feel like anyone is actually looking for a new solution. I feel like, you know, you guys have the plan, and that's the plan that you're sticking with. I don't believe it's fair for the non-public and public schools. It's definitely not the apples to apples. So I was looking for, I'm trying to come up with solutions to be of assistance, even though it's not my main job, but I haven't heard anything, so I just wanted to express my disappointment that I really thought that maybe the board was, the director of transportation was trying to come up with some other solutions, and it really just doesn't seem that way. So that's all I had to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have Brett Seymour.
Good evening. I'm Brett Seymour. I live at 2358 Williston Green Road in Toledo, Ohio. Thanks, Dr. Motley, and the Silvania School Board for your service and the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I've been here in front of this entity several times in the past regarding non-public transportation. I'm here tonight to put more information on the record. Since I was here last in June, much has come to light. In a discussion with ODE Transportation Department, we've been informed that since September 30th, 2021, because of House Bill 110, the public school districts like ours have been receiving double payments for all non-public school riders. I hold a detailed report here in my hand to validate that. This is the Ohio Department of Education's Office of Budget and School Funding, Transportation, Traditional School District, June 1st payment data as of 5/24/2022. In this document, that has been previously emailed to all board members here, it details that while providing service to 330 non-public school riders, you've received payment for 660. That adds up to $698,280.80 for your non-public school riders. The district has opted for a per-ride or payment instead of a per-mile payment. That results in $1.404,531.34 above the per-mile calculation. Total busing funds provided by ODE are $4,815,480.98. Why do I tell you this? We amount to 7.8% of your ridership as non-public school kids. We represent 14.49% of the reimbursement. And for this, we simply ask that our elementary school kids and our middle school kids get equal treatment to those in public school. The plan that was sent to parents on June 15th, 2022, for the non-public school riders at St. Joseph's, Insavina, Christ the King, and St. Benedict's, will not represent equal treatment. In the email dated June 14th, just one day before Dr. Motley sent that letter to our schools, Jim Wolfrich said to Dr. Motley via email in regards to non-publics taking points, and I quote, "I would suggest that you add a last bullet point after K-12 transportation, including the mix of non-public and public kids. We don't want the public parents to think all of our buses will be going K-12. Just a suggestion. Thanks." Jim. This represents knowledge of the unequal treatment.[1621.26]